Thanks, everyone. I will call the meeting of the Village of Lansing Board of Trustees for Monday, August 5, 2024, to order. First order business, both called. Susan Ainsley.
Present.
Wolfgang Bollmer.
Present.
Carolyn Greenwall.
Here.
Kathleen Yan.
Present.
That's your two. So after that, I will open our public comment period at 7:31. Is there anyone present who would like to speak on a topic that's not already on our agenda? Hi, Lisa. Lisa Schleitlin.
So I'm here to come to do a purpose. I'm Lily Evans. I'm here for the planning board. And I think originally this was the date that was going to be set for the public hearing for the solar law, but it had to be changed because of various things. So I'm not going to be able to be here on the 19th, whenever your next meeting is. So I wanted to come and talk, so I want to talk about it a little bit tonight, specifically about the decommissioning issue, which was still something that the planning board was having some problems with having to remove from both Tier 1 and Tier 2. And it's something that I feel strongly is an escape based on 14 years in the planning board and having observed some behavioral issues that we've experienced. But I don't hear the unit as understanding that this is my issue because at our last meeting, I called the board because I said, you know, I still feel strongly, and you know that my plan for all service. And it was unanimous, actually, that everyone really feels that we would like to readdress some form of decommissioning language to protect the village. And I think it's especially concerning Tier 2 because, you know, well, almost every other code that I put that, you know, whether it's a wishy-washy statement or whatever, there's some sort of, you know, responsibility and statement about when something is no longer functional, it must be removed responsibly, et cetera. The problem with Tier 2 is we have commercial entities in Tier 2. And it just seems that it's not just homeowners that we're talking about there. But in addition, we've discussed too that, you know, okay, so how much leverage do you have? Well, you don't. But if you don't have anything in your code, you're not going to be able to enforce anything legally or otherwise. And I think we found that to be true. So I understand that you're concerned about cost. So I don't think that we have to have costs necessarily attached to the homeowners. But we feel strongly that we need to make people aware of their responsibility. It may be 25 to 30 years down the road, but these materials are not totally benign. We know that. So some of them are going to be considered hazardous waste. And I just think that the feeling is that there should be clear responsibility stated so people aren't caught off guard about when a system is defunct and no longer functioning, that it has to be removed responsibly. And so we're hoping that you might consider letting us work out some other language, come back and work, try to find something that will work for everyone because we feel pretty strongly about this. And I think if you go to any other code, you're going to find there's some sort of decommissioning statement, whether it's simply that they got, you know, 12 months and certain notice. I think you've covered just by any penalties. And I know it's kind of wishy-washy to not have specific fines or indications. I know Wolfgang, you've said that too. If there's nothing that really specific, you know, what kind of leverage you have. Natalie has even said too, if you're going to have a financial something attached to it. But if we don't make people responsible at all, we're never going to get them to do this. And it seems you're putting the burden on the village as well as all the other taxpayers in the village as a result by protecting the people that have solar systems, which aren't the majority of the people, I don't think, in the village. So I'm, we're hoping that you might reconsider and going through this. I mean, I have some thoughts where we might slip in some of the language. One of them was I looked at our application and I realized, actually, our application needs to be revised because we had in there, one of the checklist items was parallel to the root, which I think was then deleted. So we have to revise our application as well for the permit. So I think there's still work to be done and I'm hoping that we can have a little more time before we put this into law. I think it's important and I think the whole board feels that. And we're willing to put some work into it. So that's my public comment for this evening.
Thank you, Lisa. There is no one online. There's no one else in the room. So I will entertain a motion to close the public comment period.
I so move.
Who seconds?
Second.
Thank you, Carolyn. And Susan, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. 7:37. The next order of business is to approve our minutes from July 15 and 18, 20 minutes. We were all present for both meetings, so we can do differently. I will move that we accept the draft minutes, approve the draft minutes. Do I need a second?
Second.
Thank you, Wolfgang. Is there any concerns?
Just a minor typo, disgust rather than discussion. What was discussion should be what was discussed. It's just minor. And then the CSC was, it's a July 18, 2024 meeting.
Okay. Just the date was incorrect. Okay. We can approve those with the contingent upon Jody making those two minor corrections and she should be able to get that from this video and make those corrections. So it's been moved. Any other discussion or questions? Okay. All those in favor of approving the minutes with Kathleen's minor edits or changes? Please say aye.
Aye.
I apologize I'm having to take notes tonight since Jody's not here. Okay. The next discussion of mayor comments and what I would like to do is, would we like to discuss Lisa's proposal that we allow them to do changes on the solar law?
My position is that if we have three votes to pass the law, we should go forward. But I don't know if we do. I would vote for it in favor of it as it is. But if there's not, if there's not three votes to pass it, then we should discuss it. So do people want to reveal how they're finding on voting?
So the public meeting is to, have we heard from the Tompkins County?
No, we won't hear from them probably until mid-month.
They're not going to have any comment? 100% no.
Yeah. They almost never do.
Not on this issue.
Or it's, it may be something that they, it can be something that they request that we do. And if we have a supermajority of votes here, it does not have to, we do not have to do it. But it happens occasionally, but very, very rarely for a person.
The issue with the decommissioning is not cost for me, although that's a consideration. The issue is the filing that's required and the administrative oversight that's required towards the benefit and then also the intrusiveness and just like overreach of regulations towards the benefit. Those are the two things that weigh for me in favor of the plan as is. I don't think that it is comparable to asbestos. I think that's unnecessary hyperbole. That was the discussion of the planning board was like, this is like an asbestos situation, like that it's like toxic. I just, I just.
It is hazardous.
It's not.
Some of, some of the materials are hazardous and you have to get rid of them in a pretty controlled way. I said that one and a half years ago, probably, when we had discussion about the solar energy and whether we should go solar or not. I said it back then. There is hazardous material in there and after 20 years, you can't just throw it in the garbage. It's not possible. So there is cost associated if you do it right.
Well, you're not going to vote in favor of it either way, correct? So would you be more inclined to vote in favor of it if there was a decommission plan that required?
It's not a question, it's not a question of decommissioning.
Right.
It's a question of environmental consciousness, you know, and protection. That's, I don't, I don't care about decommissioning, whatever. But there should be an orderly discharge of non-functioning solar panels.
That sounds like you do care about decommissioning.
Well, to Wolfgang's point, it's going to cost somebody something at some point. And to Lisa's point, it could be 25, 30 years. I mean, I mean, do we want to look at, oh.
Okay. First, can we go back to my question? Is there three votes in favor of the current version or there's not?
With all due respect to the planning board's work for how many years, Lisa?
Well, I think, I don't think that it is. But I really think, I really don't understand your position, Carolyn, because this, these materials aren't all benign. And, you know, I've heard many things about like capping natural gas wells and that weren't capped. You know what the real reason why they weren't capped? Lack of political will to enforce it and give the people who are responsible for making sure this was decommissioned. If you don't want to call it decommissioned, some call it abandonment. It's just when something is no longer functional. So essentially, I want you to really think about Tier 2. There are commercial entities in there. Why would we, as taxpayers, cover these commercial entities when they, if they can afford to do business in our village, can probably afford to do this? It's, but it's about raising awareness. For the most part, most people will do it and be responsible for it. But there will be ones that don't. We have plenty of examples of that lately in our village. And if you have nothing in your code, you will lose.
Well, there isn't nothing. There are, there are, there isn't nothing because there is, there are procedures set forth for any of the, any of the, that cover all of the tiers. They're not decommissioning, but there isn't nothing. There is some kind of enforcement. For me, the biggest issue is that I love the way our village functions as a collective group with both the trustees and the planning board. My biggest sticking point right now is that the planning board is unhappy. For me, what I love best, what?
The planning board what?
Is unhappy. Like they're, for me, the most important thing here is like, I love the way our village functions as just a, like a collective agreeable unit where people coalesce their opinions. So for me, the biggest sticking point right now is that you're unhappy. It's not the decommissioning plan, like, not you personally, the planning board.
I don't, honestly, this isn't for me personal.
Right. Same.
I'm not too involved in personal stuff.
Same.
But it is important to me, it's just to me, and I think it's the board. I mean, I thought, okay, am I the only one getting on soapbox here besides Mike? And so I said to everybody, no, I'm not.
But the problem, decommissioning is not just, it's not just, it's all of the filing that has to be done and the, and collaborating with the deed and all of that business.
Stop, stop. We're not suggesting that they even necessarily file the decommissioning plan except in Tier 3. But we want them to say, yes, I will be responsible, perhaps in the permit, with the understanding that they will be responsible when the end of life comes to this stuff.
Okay.
Do that kind of thing. I think we could come back to the drive boards to you with something. It may sound wishy-washy, but again, I think it's raising awareness. When people move here, I mean, I'm thinking about when I first had my first house. Okay.
You've already convinced me. Don't worry about it.
Okay.
You've already convinced me. If you're saying you're going to put something in the permit that says, I agree to be responsible for this, that's fine. We're not filing it with the county court or whatnot.
Don't we have something like that in the law as is right now?
No, not really.
Because there is abandonment and there is, if it doesn't work after 12.
I mean, I thought.
Months, you have to decommission and things like that.
No, it's not in there. It's only for Tier 3. That's our problem. It's only Tier 3.
The non-functioning after 12 months?
Yeah. Exactly. Unless I've got the wrong latest version.
I don't think, I thought there is something in there for all tiers that if it doesn't.
I agree, I agree with Wolfgang. That was my understanding also.
If it's not functioning after 12 months, it needs to be taken down.
It should be maybe in the general conditions. I mean, I don't care. There's, like, the town of Geneva has this very, you know, if it doesn't work after, yes, that's what should be there.
I think it is there.
Well, it isn't in the version I had last, but I don't know if this is the latest.
This version is from Natalie. I'm looking.
See if you, if you have it because I.
Because we said, we treat, we treat a solar installment as every other building or a.
As a property in progress.
As, as all these sheds and whatever.
Right.
So, and we said, if that's the case, that we consider this installation, like all the other accessory buildings, whatever, then it's unnecessary because then it falls under that.
See.
And you can't just let your shed fall apart and things like that.
We look at G validity, abandonment, and causes for decommissioning. These pages are numbered.
9, but it's only in Tier 3.
I don't think so.
Is it?
No, because it's a separate, I mean, it's a.
Then we don't have the latest version.
So all of the provisions seem to apply to all tiers, except express. Chip changes, this, that, and the other. That's E. Permitting requirements is F.
Okay. We don't, we don't have the right version then, I don't think.
But then G is a separate subarticle or article.
But it's only in Tier, Tier.
No, it says, it doesn't say that.
Am I looking at the wrong G? Are you looking at capital G?
It's capital G.
Isn't it only in Tier 3? The only.
Capital G.
Building permit for a solar energy system shall be valid for 12.
That's it.
There is capital G.
If an owner or operator fails to complete.
For Tier 3 only. See, I think we don't.
Be notified.
Here, this version says.
Hang on, hang on. Let's let Peter tell us what he's reading.
Yeah, I'm reading section G, validity, abandonment, and cause for decommissioning.
Yeah.
Does it apply to all three tiers?
It's, it's a separate, it's entirely separate from the Tier 3 definition.
Yes, see, it's only in Tier 3, correct?
No, no. Entirely separate. So in other words, here, here we have A, purpose, B, objectives, C, applicability. General requirements shall be required for installation of a whole.
Right.
Systems. Building permits shall be required for all systems. Special permit. Okay. So we go through and it parses what type of system you have.
Okay.
Ownership changes.
We don't have the right version, I don't think.
Ownership changes.
Because I don't think that was in the general.
Okay. So, but that's E. Okay. So now.
Right. I understand that, but that's very important.
F goes into the permitting requirements. And that's where it's Tier 1, Tier 2, and Tier 3. So that's the only place they're separated. Then we go back to G.
Okay.
Then we go back to G, which is, it's general. It's back to kind of a general provision. It says building permit for a solar energy system.
I don't think we have the right version that we were looking at.
Okay. But going forward in there, it does say, upon cessation of electricity generation of a solar energy system on a continuous basis for 12 months. We may notify and writing the owner.
We have certain 90 days or something.
That they has been deemed abandoned and order the owner to decommission the solar energy system according to the approved and filed plan.
Do you know what the date is on this one?
I don't. But Natalie sent it to me.
It was June.
My request on, over the weekend. So I had asked her for the latest version.
I think we aren't working with the latest version. That's what I'm thinking.
It's quite possible. There are a lot of versions.
There are, and I would.
And I can understand.
I'd be happier when you read this because Natalie had all the same.
Yes, maybe we need to.
I know.
So I think you're going to be happy when you see what she's done.
I know, but if we haven't seen it.
Okay. So let's make sure you get it.
Here's my problem also is the way we handle provisions as a village, it is scandalous. I wasn't a credit provider. We would have been never recredited for any changes we made. There's never dates. There's never who did it. There's not Rev A, B, C, D, E, and it's very frustrating. And so here I am, going through maybe no reason to do this and get all in a twist about this.
Right.
Because we don't know what the hell we're dealing with. So I think we need to look at some process.
Different question, that.
Sorry.
No, thank you. Thank you, Lisa, because I know you've struggled.
And I love page numbers.
I know you do.
So that when you have discussions, you can say, if everybody would look at page 9, paragraph 3.
Does your, does your version not have page numbers?
No.
No, mine does, but it's the wrong version.
Okay. It doesn't matter. Okay.
But over time, history, if I've listened to planning board meetings and as you've gone through documents, time and date stamp and who made the changes and who didn't get what, where, when, how, and for which meeting, and as you were zooming in or if you were present at the table.
It's my thing.
Well.
Well, I'm sorry that I've gotten so upset about this, but if we have it, it's fine. I don't disagree. It's just we've got to have something.
I should take this.
Thank you. I would like to.
I can forward Natalie's email to meet everybody else, but I had asked.
I very well have had this, I suppose, but because it's not so dated or anything, you never quite know what you've got. And you think, oh, I've already got this, but you don't. All right. So this is the latest and the greatest.
As far as I know.
And there's a little number down here on the bottom that maybe means something.
It's a document number from our system at the office.
There you go. Thank you.
And I think it's not hard for us to add a version number. It's got a version number, but I think we can add a date.
Okay.
A date stamp for it.
Okay.
And I'll talk to Natalie about that, so.
The, that version is the one that has been sent to the county for review. And it was the one that we have, we have made available for people to see before the public hearing, too. So we want to be careful making changes to the document before the public hearing.
Well, Lisa, if you get a chance to review it and if you're not, if you're, if you're.
Satisfied.
Satisfied, then we'll go forward.
Well, I think, I want to be sure that everybody in the planning.
By you, I mean the planning board, of course.
The public hearing is until your next meeting, correct?
The 19th.
Yeah. So there's plenty of time to look at this and be sure that everybody is fine with this.
That would be great.
All right. Sorry about the confusion.
Me too. But I agree with Carolyn that, you know, we've got to work together more closely perhaps at times, especially when it's a code or a law. It's really important.
Well, Natalie had all those same concerns. I felt like she thought she addressed them just in a different way.
Yeah. I, yeah, I think.
She didn't disagree.
No. No, I usually kind of, Natalie and I agree to the same point. None of us, of course. So if I may.
Kathleen, go ahead.
Oh, I don't know. It's Ronnie. Wait for him.
What?
It's just smart and I won't let you.
The control is a lot.
This is the climate control. Ronnie, can you hear me? Okay. To Lisa's point, have, for the planning board to have some financial mitigation mechanisms in place to protect the village is important, particularly the commercial ground mounted with the increased size to 13, 35 square feet, which was increased from the 500s. That is something to consider. The environmental impact and hazardous waste is also a factor to consider. Lisa mentioned the permit application that was in the appendix has to be updated.
Yeah, we have to make some changes.
And appendix J, the matrix then would have to be.
We can still pass a solar law and up the permit.
I voted to set a public hearing because I think it's really critical to get the community's input before there's a final law adopted. But if there are, and I would like to know what the county's input is also, since how that fits into their overall, what recommendations they have.
They, he's probably right. They might not say anything, especially if this is the version I saw.
Mostly of traffic.
You're not going to hear about this at all.
But, you know, actually, the thing, the problem with someone's with the planning board, our, our position usually is, it isn't a big problem to comply with their suggestions. They're usually decent suggestions. So they'll override them unless it's something really sort of that we think is not appropriate because of the scope of our village.
So you do need a well-defined decommissioning plan with the financial remedies and instruments in place.
Kind of thing, except, I mean, I am a little more concerned about the commercial in Tier 2. But I think our real goal is simply to say, you're responsible for this. Have them acknowledge their responsibility either in the permit or whatever, move on and do anything so that if there's a problem, we have our hope.
Some reinforce.
And reinforce because as we know with past things when we were on the planning board, but hadn't been for it being in a comprehensive plan or whatever, when there was a law, because as Bill tried to say, we sue over anything, and we will, we will come out with it because we had it there and, you know, that's what, so you want something there to look to. And I think it's better if it should become something, I think the same thing with the tree code, if it becomes onerous in obvious ways for our residents, we will amend it. But I think it's better to go that direction than to leave it out and then somebody doesn't comply, add it back in. I think it's easier to go that direction personally, but that's something that the boards have to deal with.
So you're going back to the planning board.
Yeah, with this version, we're sure all the same page.
To get their consensus.
Yep.
And will let us know.
Yeah.
What that consensus is. Okay.
Wolfgang, do you have something you wanted to say?
Well, always, but just keep in mind, if you do decommissioning plans, they have to be filed for 25 years. If you ask for financial security, you have to have bonds or whatever. So you have administration effort and some of the reasons why we didn't want to go there is exactly the administration effort for the village, not for the resident. Because then you're sitting on a pile of money and you have to make sure it's all interest rates and whatever, you know, all these kinds of things. And I think that this version should accomplish what you were looking for.
I think it does, too.
What we were looking for and also minimize the administration effort for the village.
I think so, too. Okay. But I also think we want to change something in the appendix to be a little more comprehensive to indicate what is required. So I've been working on another version for that, too, that we need to submit, but that's the appendix going to change.
Yeah. The appendix does not require that much for, it doesn't require 239 review for me.
I think because we thought the bond was appropriate, they have to follow.
It's, it's still in there.
It's a large-scale plan.
Right.
Of system, I mean. So, there it is. The rest, we'll see where it goes in 25 years if anybody.
Nothing.
And filing with.
Left it in there for the Tier 3, right?
Just for Tier 3. Yeah, it's.
Left it in there and we took it out for 1 and 2.
Which is not, anything that's not 1 and 2. So at one point, there was the $50-something filing fee with the, with the county clerk and that one sentence phrase, so that homeowner. and that one sentence phrase so that homeowners would be aware.
For buyers.
Yeah, buyers.
But it's in the statute, everybody.
OK, and that's still in there, good.
Since I think is that all of the previous conditions and whatnot were transferred with that deed or when the property changed.
So.
The responsibility will transfer to the new owner.
Yes. And the new owner, new owner has to be made aware of that, so.
And that's important, but it's mostly about people being aware that this is something they're going to have to, you know, solve for, that's our main concern.
Yeah, and to Wolfgang's point and yours in terms of hazardous waste and just waste mitigation as an emerging solid waste management issue in the 10 year plan, that was an emerging issue that has to be addressed.
That's widely known, but nobody talks about it. Because everybody is right now on this crazy soul train, which is totally crazy, by the way, my opinion. But no, nobody talks about it, everybody knows it, but I think a lot of these politicians pushing right now solo don't know it and they ignore it. That's my humble opinion, what I see in all these discussions. The disadvantages are getting pushed aside and the advantages are far overstated, far. So, anyway.
I think there's consensus of agreement there. OK.
All right, I will close that part of our discussion. My other comments are related to clean energy communities grants. We have submitted our grant, our grant application for tier two clean heating and cooling. I have not heard back from that if the grant has been awarded. And I filed another grant today for a tier one grant for our latest solar, community solar program that we have with Solar Farms New York. So both of those grants are being reviewed and at some point, probably within the next couple of weeks, say by the end of the month, we should find out if we have been awarded those grants. The, we will put those into like a clean energy account within our budget lines and the $10,000 award, they require a project or a cluster of projects for the money to be spent on and track it. For the $5,000 grants, that's not required, but we absolutely can combine the money and go forward with a cluster of projects. So this, this was new news to me. I just wasn't aware of it, but I found out today. So those have been submitted. We just have to wait for the approval of the grants and receipt of the grants. Beyond that, I don't have anything else. So we'll go around the table for general discussion. Wolfgang, do you have anything tonight?
Well, just for information, I'm talking right now with Mike regarding a notice of violation. And I guess when we're done with discussing, we'll inform the board.
Notice, notice of violation what?
Noise ordinance, as always. Much higher than 59 dB at the property line.
OK.
For extended periods of time, so. That's just for information, so we are not done with discussion so far.
OK, let's listen when you arrive at it.
When, when we are on the same page, Mike and I, then we are going to inform you.
OK, I apologize again, I just take my slow writing notes. Anything else, Wolfgang?
Nope, nothing for me. Lisa has covered the planning board and the solar. And, oh, Getzmann, he was, he was denied.
His, his permit has been revoked.
Yeah, OK.
So he's supposed to finish phase one. Phase two will be up for grabs.
And he did, he said it several times. He may be selling it to another party. It's for sale.
He knows, he knows what's transpired, but he gave no movement whatsoever on any of the outstanding.
None, and it was a two-page.
So it's pretty appropriate and it's pretty easy for the planning board to come through there.
Yeah, we went above and beyond.
Way beyond.
About eight years ago.
I was going to say, when I first got on the board, that's when Jason started, he was supposed to have those done about two years later. I've been on the board for 14 years, so it's been about 12 years or so, but who's counting?
That is.
Leyline is. Anything else, Susan?
No.
Carolyn?
The, um, the comprehensive plan committee has completed the surveys as residential. The online version is completely done. We're going to be creating a paper version, it's going to go out in the newsletters in the fall. We're going to be creating a email address list to send out the surveys. Hope to have all of that data collected by the end of December and then we'll start thinking about the comprehensive plan update itself, which will go on for those next 12 months.
Sorry, when you started, I thought you said the comp plan had been updated, was it not?
No, the comprehensive plan survey.
Survey, survey, sorry, I missed the.
Residential and business is completed.
OK.
We are now creating paper versions of them. The online version is done.
OK, all right, that's good.
And this letter. What's that?
It'll go with the plan.
What?
The, the plan for distribution.
Oh, yes, we're going to distribute them.
Yeah, so you're working on who and how and.
Yep.
How long will you give people, do you think?
I want people, I want the answers to be mostly done by the end of this year, so the end of this year. So we'll give it to them, we'll say, please do the next two months, a month later, we'll give it to them again and say, please do the next, sorry, two weeks. We'll give it to them here, this is the new deadline, but we'll take their information. We're going to pretend to have deadlines.
Yeah, the goal is to the 2025 update, correct?
Yeah, update, writing the update during 2025, it'll be done at 2026 is our plan.
Right, OK, that's right.
That's originally what you had suggested to me.
Yeah, yeah.
OK.
Yeah, yeah.
That's where I got that timeline.
Yeah, knowing you, you could have moved this deadline up, Carol.
No, we're not meeting for the next six months, our committee is, we're taking a six months hiatus right now.
All right, thanks. Anything else, Carol? Oh, question, bulbs, have we heard back from Professor Williams?
I wrote to him and I said, I, I want to know like the costs or whatnot and are you, he's putting in the order for us and he did not, he just said, how much do you want to spend? And I said, how much do they cost?
How much have you got?
Well, he knows how much we've got. I said, we have, we have $2,500. If you get some great savings if you throw in 500 more and it's $3,000 for a truckload, which is what he originally told me.
We might consider that.
Then, yeah, well, we can do that. If all of a sudden it comes in like some more class efficient manner, but then he didn't reply.
OK.
But don't, yeah, I haven't gotten the catalogs yet, like, you know, urging me to buy, buy bulbs, so I'm not worried yet.
OK.
I think he's going to do it. We have a beautification grant to buy bulbs and the Cornell professor is buying them in bulk for us, he also buys them for Cass Park.
Oh, well, I see.
Big guy and he plants them. He works with the city garden club and then he's working with us.
Just keep us updated.
Yeah, if I don't hear from him again in a couple of weeks, I'll write back.
Thanks, Carol. Kathleen?
You already covered the July 18th CSC task force and then there was the July 30th planning board that was covered. The only thing I had was the resource hub. We have a new one starting at the YMCA. I talked to Mona Lita Smiley today. So it'll be the 12th will be the effective date. It'll be from 11 o'clock to 1 o'clock. And 50 Graham Road West, first and third Mondays of the month, 11 to 1. And services offered, you know, the computer internet access to access and print information, transportation resources and schedule, how filling out forms, benefit forms and services both online and paper, and then medical appointments over the phone and internet, so free access.
Good.
And then the town board, I think everybody probably got the 24-page newsletter.
Yes.
And then the last meeting, it was, there was a presentation on the gap analysis and some information about some grants for the trail that were applied for.
Thank you, everyone. So our agenda tonight, we have an executive session to discuss medical, financial and employment, history of a particular employee. I would need someone to move us into that executive session. Kathleen? OK. And second.
Second.
Thank you. Hi, Lisa, thank you.
Have fun.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good to see you.
It was coming.
Thank you so much. Good night.
OK, I am turning off the recording at 8:12 PM. It is now 8:52. The Board of Trustees has come out of its executive session. It was, we came out of executive, the executive session with Susan Ainsley moving it and Kathleen Yin seconding it, and it was a unanimous decision. We have no actions to take at the end of the executive session, so I will now entertain adjournment. Someone want to adjourn? OK, and who seconded? Oh, it's Wolfgang, I saw you. All those adjourning tonight's meeting at 8:53, say aye?
Aye.
Thank you. OK, I will, I will start working on the letters, probably finish it up tomorrow morning with a fresh mind. I have to do some of it immediately.
OK.
Or I'll.
It's your choice.
It's, it's just, it's just, I'll, I'll start a first draft tonight and polish it up. And I'll send it out to you. Anyway, thanks a lot.